Okay, we're all on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Anything to be added to the events? Motion to approve.
So move.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All carry. Prove the minutes of September ninth.
I look through the minutes and they look all correct, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So, general public concerns. Anybody want to talk?
No, he's, you're, you're.
You're on that, Jen.
You're, you're on the.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm certainly, uh, I live on Hawaii Avenue, so about mile, mile and a half from the Redland Corner, Cole Anderson. Um, last year I had a new well put in, uh, right around fifteen K for it. And, uh, I've had no issue with it whatsoever this entire year until after he blasted. Um, my well was dug at around a hundred and five foot and now, uh, September eleventh, I had, uh, B and E pump service and, uh, uh, my well guys, Bill Bieber come out. So they tested everything and they ran out of water. They had to lower the pump. My water level's around fifty eight to sixty foot, but it's backfilled so much up to about sixty five foot. So from a hundred and five foot, it's gone up to backfill with sediment. Uh, since I think he blasted, was it July twenty sixth? And, uh, from there, um, I was changing filters out once, once a week, and then it went to, two to three times a week and I got a big sediment fishery where my water was just completely turned and just, just smudge. And, uh, from there, um, yeah, it's just been those filter for twenty, twenty-five bucks and a piece. So I'm spending that per week, two, three times. And then now when the well guys came out, they said that it's more or less, we have been compromised by that blast. And I'm gonna have somebody come over for my, uh, to inspect my subject tank too also to make sure that nothing's wrong with that. Uh, I did talk to county attorney, uh, emailed him. He basically told me that I had turned it into some, insurance company and then hired private attorney pretty much. So I'm lost on what I need to do about all this and I didn't, it's just, it's ridiculous that you just get something put in last year and then somebody goes against the law and blows something up or does that and now people around Redland would have faith for it.
So for reference, he would be where the Jake was, uh.
West of Highway three and then north quarter mile.
One mile past the Redland corner, right? On Highway three?
Yep.
On the west side of Black or gravel. So it's a mile above the flats.
Yeah, mile, mile and a half maybe. Crows fly is probably a mile there.
And I'm sorry, I, did you, I didn't catch your name.
Seth.
Seth.
Seth, okay.
And unfortunately, um, when we visited the other day and I told you, you can come in and explain your issue, but it would probably be more of a private.
It's a civil matter.
Civil matter. So, I mean, you can talk with the attorney that's representing, uh.
I did, I did talk to that.
Thank you. That needs to be noted.
Yeah, and he knows and he says it would more or less be a conflict of interest since he's working with home town.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd have to get with somebody else. So he's looking into other people around.
Yes, okay. Good. I think it'd be good to talk to other people about issues and maybe you can do a joint, joint thing. Save your money.
Give him advice.
Hire one or three.
Yep.
But.
But, uh, would that, would that be a class? I think it would be a class action. I mean, if there's enough.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. Yeah. I don't know where class action goes in and where, you know what I mean, where individuals.
But it's like, I've never had to deal with insurance company when it comes to a well. I know it replaces certain parts of the well.
Yeah, like pumps and motors and.
Yeah, but to have it re-drilled.
Yeah, that's a whole different, I don't.
All the game, you know. And then we know how some insurance companies are, they like to just try to, well, whose fault is this?
Right.
Um, I'd suggest contacting the city of Bo. They've had issues with the equipment there also. Yeah, so you could talk to them.
Say good luck. Sorry.
Yeah. It's just a bad situation all the way around.
Yeah.
Did it crack the casing or?
Uh, from what they said, they dropped the, uh, they dropped the measuring tool down there and it hit water in two gates, but, and then that's where he was setting the pump. They should pump this better, uh, getting better for water. And he dropped the rest of the, uh, measuring tool down. He had sediment at sixty-five. So they think either the casing's cracked or it's just, it compromised. I mean, it's brand new. So I mean, I get that there's gonna be sediment coming into it throughout the first year or so, but not like that I don't know. And it's plugging up everything and so. But we got it going for now and they said they don't know if they'll be able to last half water for the rest of the year or what to do, but.
Still, you shouldn't have faith for that.
And then the guy that they talked to about the well, uh, they also stated that they did a little call. And, uh, Cole was asking them to break them or draft them something that states that he blasts that nothing will affect any of his wells, sorry.
Well.
I wouldn't say it's good luck and hopefully we'll get something figured out.
Talk to the people around you and the other citizens close by and Redland and Bo and all of them that was out of lights.
Yeah, this is what my fear was. We put that in and then hearing the whole thing going on in Redland, I knew it. It's like soon as we put this well in, it's like something happened and blast and he does a big enough blast, it's gonna be bad for a lot of us.
Yep. It's more or less a civil matter, so talk to the other people maybe and get all together and get your lawyer.
Thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the general public? If not, moving on. Austin.
Everyone.
You can hold it up if you want. Yeah, you're good. Go ahead. Have it. You got, go ahead and have a chair.
I have a hand around here for you. So this is what's emailed out to everyone, but some people like to take their best. This is the match funds for the Heart of Iowa Trust Fund. So I am the sole board record in the for Humboldt County. Um, it will be on my second full term. Um, so for you that are not familiar with the Humboldt or the Heart of Iowa Trust Fund, um, basically what we do is we allow assistance for low income individuals that are unable to perform repairs to their homes. Um, there's a strict guideline where we can utilize the funds for, and that is outlined by the Iowa Finance Authority. Um, so what I just handed out to you is the match funds that are required by the county. It goes off of per capita. We are awarded by Iowa Finance Authority of two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then we have a per capita of two dollars. So Humboldt County has nine thousand and five hundred and ninety-seven people. We have the additional fund for that. And then the county and then the city all match the twelve thousand that we have in there plus the additional fees that we incur. Um, and those fees are listed for us. So basically what it is, I want to come to the board. Um, the board supervisors has generously given five thousand dollars already. Um, just wanted some clarification there for everyone here. Um, the city has, I've been talking to Cole on this. The city has, um, talked with, or they're looking to have a meeting, um, today and they should be doing their remaining match. Uh, but we're looking forward to next year to make sure we can do a better, better process into this. Um, so it's not such a run around here at the end of the time. So, so what I'm asking for the board, um, is what do you expect for us on timeframe? How would you like us to present this, everything going forward? I think this spreadsheet does a good example of what's being allocated for counties, um, understanding what it is. So thoughts, questions, initial, initial thoughts, I guess.
And this is the new trust fund from Homeward that we used to be on.
Yep.
When that one, um, went defunct.
And one thing I'd like to do too is once the year is done, uh, we've completed three full project in Humboldt County, one in process. Um, currently we have about thirty-eight hundred dollars left in our funds. Um, typically what we'd like to do is try to keep around three to five thousand for winter expenses, um, for emergency use on furnaces. Um, cause we do have up to two years to utilize the funds. So three thousand doesn't get capitalized this year. We can utilize it in the following year. Um, so our hopes are, hopefully no one needs a furnace, um, in dire need, but that's typically what we like to do, um, on that front. But we've done for sure three, I think one in Gilmore, one in Humboldt, I think one right on the outside. So I'd like to do a recap after the year's done for everyone. No, just, uh, just so you know where the funds are going to win from the homes or where. Obviously we can't tell you the properties, um, because of the confidentiality there, but be happy to explain it.
Are they, uh, like low interest loans? Are they grants or?
Forgivable loans, but a five-year forgivable loan. So it's twenty percent drop off. So if you were to sell your house on your.
Yeah, you have to pay it back.
Pay back forty percent.
Yep.
Yep. So, um, I don't think we've ever had one where we've had to collect on. Typically these people are staying in their homes. The only time they would repay if there was a debt, um, in the way that they could sell, so.
Well, we usually sort our budget stuff in December, so.
That'd be a good time for you to come.
Do you want to request?
Yeah, cause the hard part of that is we don't get funding acknowledgement until July. So the Iowa Finance Authority will give us funding acknowledgement following the year. So we would just receive this in July. I mean, we should be able to have a good idea. Um, I mean, we could at least give an idea. So, so what the, what the Iowa Finance Authority requires is a letter of commitment. It doesn't have to actually be a check cut or anything of that nature, uh, because these funds themselves don't need to be in account until you're in. Um, so basically we just need a letter of commitment that the board be willing to put up, say seven thousand dollars for what it would be. Um, be willing to put up that amount. The check doesn't need to be cut until four years here, so. Um, and what a lot of the other counties have done is they've done commitment letters, um, to cover the full amount. And then they go around, they ask the city, they ask the other towns, things of that nature. They'll cover the amount. And then the county itself doesn't have the whole point of the project, so.
Well, if you put that letter in our hands, we could at least remember, but all of us aren't young kids anymore that remember everything.
Yeah.
So it kind of slipped our mind.
Yeah, more, more of a request letter in December.
Yeah. We had the five thousand down from Homeward yet still, cause we still just carried that forward. Um, but all the other counties are having the same issue. They have to have their budgets in too. So I'm sure, and it, it shouldn't change a lot cause Homeward never changed. I mean, it was always five thousand. So I'm not sure why, since we went with Heart of Iowa, why that's, you know what I mean?
Increased, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I understand.
Other than the cost.
We knew it was gonna increase. I mean, when we switched, but, um, I don't, I think part of it is administrative too. Homeward, um, the, the R E C took over. I mean, they did all the administrative. That was kind of like their donation for it. And then when they quit doing it, and I don't know what the administrative fee is and who does administrative fee for this.
Yeah, so part of that's included now with Finance Authority. They do have a substantial amount of the administrative side. Um, but then we do have two representatives in Fort Dodge that work for the city of Fort Dodge that we utilize and they do get, I don't know the compensation on top.
Right. And see, that's, I think, part of a lot of the money here is, is that, you know, um.
The, the key thing is on the back of the column that is total funds per county, um, that, those funds will be spent in our county. So less all the administrative fees on the side. So I mean, so that's an important number. Yeah. So I think in our county this next year we'll have sixty thousand dollars. Um, that we'll be able to utilize of projects and our projects are no greater than fifteen thousand without a board approval. I mean, so that would be four, four projects of the fifteen thousand. And we have seen that that has become an issue because fifteen thousand dollars no longer goes very far. Um, when you have to do roofing, siding, windows, things of that nature. So, um, but the program has been great in the, in the two years I've been a part of it. Um, I, I do know there's other counties having issues with approval. So I do appreciate the five thousand that, at first, I mean, that's, that's farther than some other counties. I know Pocahontas is having some issues. Um, Calvin County, actually they did all of theirs and they're looking to eat up Pocahontas' funds. They have Pocahontas and step up to the plate. So, um, there is opportunity to, to grab more funds for the county if another county didn't basically put their match up. But, um, so I know there, there is a need out there. Um, it's a good program. Um, I've signed applications myself with individuals and they're, they're very appreciative. And then being on the bank side, um, these aren't individuals that qualify. Um, so if they came to my office, I wouldn't be able to get them alone just because of bank regulations. Um, they're low income individuals with, with, you know, fixed income. You have to add that property tax, insurance. It's just a challenge. Right. Um, and there's the people that can't go refinance elsewhere. Um, you know, they've owned this home for forty plus years and they just haven't been able to make the upkeep just because of the economy.
It's a great program. It's just the, the, the extra cost a lot of it is administrative.
Yeah, and we also saw an increase this year. Last year the twenty-three percent match, Iowa Finance Authority required a twenty-five percent increase match this year. So, so a little bit of that is dictated by the Iowa Finance Authority. Um, I mean, granted, we're not talking large, large dollars here in the, in the scheme of, of two percent increase on what the matches, but, um, the importance would be to get to you guys in December. That's what I'm looking for. Just to come with an idea. Um, so what I would like to do is probably present a worst case scenario and then you guys at least, you know, so last year was twelve thousand. Um, city would, you know, hopefully account for fifty percent of that. County would have the other, maybe build in a ten percent increase or something like that just to give a, a nut cushion there so you guys can help lend into your.
All right.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Every day.
Thank you.
Does the city of Humboldt put in on this too?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I need to. So last time I talked to Cole, he was gonna go for, in front of the council and they were gonna pick, pick up, um, the difference, the seven thousand that, uh. Yeah. Because they, they didn't budget it out either. They, they forgot about it. We, at least, at least we did. We just.
You didn't pull.
Yeah. Pull the plug on. And I agree with it. We were in one. I just didn't know what, how soon it was gonna be. So.
Okay, moving on. Kyle. Is that you?
Yep.
Come on in.
Yep.
Hi there.
Hello.
Kyle Dandy with, uh, Twin Rivers Exploration. I reached out to Ben Lutz.
Right next to him.
Nice to meet you.
Put his name, do you wanna face to a name?
Ben invited us, uh, to come here and present on a proposed seismic acquisition program. Um, I am an expert on that. The gentleman waiting in the hallway, we just didn't want to crowd you.
They're on the looking for crates to bring in.
Yeah.
Let him shop out there, man.
Oh, we're definitely gonna buy some. We have a, we have a full road show today. Uh, so I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Warren Warahan. Um, I do the regulatory and permitting for, um.
And I'm Robert Beal. I'm the seismic acquisition company. I'd be doing the acquisition itself.
Now I'm Jimmy Jeffco. I do the permitting part.
Do you all have business cards to make sure we get the names spelled and everything right?
Absolutely.
Good. That works helps a lot.
Um, so we do have a lot of material to go over, but we don't want to just completely dominate your meeting. So, uh, uh, Robert has a, uh, a slide deck he can present to you guys if that's okay.
Okay.
Or we can just generally discuss.
What do you want, Ben? You're probably gonna.
I'd say it's up to you guys. I mean, uh, for me, I'd like to know the, the whole process.
Thank you. Give us more of an overview without a little, you know.
And I can, um, leave you guys the, uh, presentation. That way anybody can do it. It's rather large cause it's got three videos showing operations in it. So it's about two hundred and sixty meg's in size. So it's, you see the email around. Um, operationally what we do, um, so Jimmy is the permit agent. They go out and contact the landowners and get permissions to go through and, and talk to the county and stuff like, talk to everybody. Just let them know that we're, that we'll be coming through. So what we do operationally is, um, the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna go out and deploy these nodes. These are autonomous nodes and they record the sound, the vibrations that we generate. Uh, we put these about every, uh, thirty foot down along the, the bardit cherry on the sides of the roads. So we'd be, we'd be shooting along the sides of the roads. Mostly trying to stay off the roads, but every once in a while with, you know, culverts, bar ditches, things like that. Um, we have to get up on the road for short periods of time and then we're backed off. We're on the, uh, we're on the, uh, roads. Basically we'll have, if we're ever on the roads, we have full traffic control, just like you do when you see construction. We'll have, uh, flaggers on the side. They'll shut down lanes, do control of traffic and then we're back off. Um, so these nodes we put down every thirty feet. Um, and there's maps, uh, that Cole has that shows the, the plan design. Um, so as we put these down, there will be a crew, uh, on U T Vs that will go and lay these out. And then after we've got a certain amount out, we then have, um, uh, what's called a vibra size buggy. I call it, it's about a twenty-seven thousand pound vehicle. So it's kind of a, a medium sized tractor kind of weight. Um, it's a little bit bigger than say, uh, one ton duly truck in length. Um, it's not, it's not a real big machine. So what that machine does is, um, it comes along, it's got a center mass on it and a base plate. It puts this plate down on the ground and then it just oscillates that, that mass and it just basically sounds vibrations into the ground. Those vibrations bounce around down geologically and then come back up. These are super sensitive. They can, they can feel, um, like an accelerator weight, weight drop hitting this eleven miles away. So these are real super sensitive. So they record all that energy bouncing around and then we take that energy and send it off to a company that then turns it into a picture. So the end result that we're doing is, think of it as, um, kind of a CAT scan, a two D CAT scan of the earth. So that's the end result. And then we hand that off. There goes to the processing and then to the interpreters. And that's where their company comes in. They interpret the data and make a decision if there's something, some structures or geology that they're interested in.
And those little module things, uh, in the ground a bit and?
Oh, these actually, you can see they've got dirt on them. They literally come off of a project that we just did in Carroll.
So they, they are not particularly buried down under the surface.
Um, no, generally what we do is we put them into the ground about like this. So what you see, if you, if you drove around, you would see something about like that on the surface. Um, we do have issues where, um, like say somebody wants to come out and moat. So, uh, we'll, we'll kind of back up. So the process that we're doing, we're literally in and out. We're moving about ten to thirteen miles a day. So when we put these out.
Out there too long.
We're generally gone, if we're in some, in front of somebody's place over a day and a half or two days, there's either weather or something's, something's come up. Um, uh, when we have bad weather, we have to shut down, but generally we're gone within about two days, maybe three days max. So we're moving very quickly. We are putting pin flags in and signs that say, hey, look, if you find one of these or you have any questions, you can call, contact us. So that way we're making people aware when we're there. It's pretty obvious we'll have about four layout crew and a vibe and we, the vibes have, um, escort vehicles that are from all the work and even on the shoulders that have flashing lights and we put signs and all the safety stuff out. So, but yeah, we're trying to notify and that's where the, the permit agents come in involved. They were trying to notify people that were in the area and they were in and they were out.
So what materials are you trying to, I mean, minerals, what are you, what are you really looking for?
Yeah, so, uh, Twin Rivers is a geologic hydrogen exploration company. Uh, so if you're gonna look at our website, um, we are basically scanning many areas, uh, not just this county, uh, the neighboring counties of Brian Webster, uh, Franklin and.
Just the thing that's going on down by Vincent that I've.
Yeah, are you the same company?
So that, we are the same company that drilled the well by Vincent. Uh, so this seismic acquisition program is complimentary to drilling wells. Basically you take data from the wells, data from the seismic acquisition program. You can start to build and understand the subsurface of the earth to see if there's hydrogen retention.
We just completed a, about a seventy-five mile project in Carroll County.
You mentioned earlier permission from the landowners. So you're gonna have to go on private land to do this also?
No, so this is, um, well, it's more of notification really. So I guess what they're talking with you guys about is access to the county and we just need to notify the landowners because obviously right now there's harvesting going on, but we're looking at coming in about forty days, maybe fifty days. So I'm assuming harvest may be almost over, but it's really working kind of close to notification on them because obviously we don't want these.
And they're expensive.
These are four hundred and fifty dollars a piece. So, uh, when you get, uh, about forty of a mode, it, it, it kind of hurts. So yeah, so we're really trying to, um, notify the landowners just so that, number one, it's just a courtesy. I mean, if somebody sees somebody out there working in front of their property, they like to know that, hey, you know, here's, we're gonna be there and here's what we're doing. So it's a courtesy to organize with them.
So this would be like, put them on the shoulder. You're doing it almost like a giant X-ray of what's going on. And then if something popped up, you would contact the landowner and work with them on.
Just like a surface lease or anything else. Yes.
They're buying the mineral rights basically from.
We're just letting you use our founding.
No, they wouldn't buy.
No?
No, they wouldn't buy.
So this is just a, you know, kind of like a scouting exercise?
This is a scout size.
But I mean, if you do find something, is then, is that what I mean? Then you're gonna buy mineral rights from the landowners or?
They would be like a surface lease to farm. They would, they would go, I've been, some, maybe talking, but generally they lease, uh, lease the rights to do that.
Same way. That's how the wind goes.
Uh, okay.
Lease, okay. That way they can get out of it.
Yeah, but from a timeline perspective, that it takes us a long time to get the data.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
This could be, if there is some kind of interest, it could be several months, if not a year or less for now.
And normally what they do is the three D, like you mentioned, this is considered a scout. So they're getting kind of a regional idea. And then what that does is once they refine that, then they find areas. Then a lot of times they'll come back in. Um, I don't know if y'all have the carbon capture, sequestration projects to run up here as well. So what they do is they'll come back in and a lot of times they'll drop the three D down to really define. And the reason to you, a lot of times you drop the three D, um, before you start drilling is, um, it optimizes your drill location. So you don't have to drill more wells than, than needed. So it's kind of generally you do the scout, then you do an optimized three D typically, not always. If they're happy with the structure and they see plenty of structure, then they sometimes don't do three Ds, but a lot of times they'll draw three D down. And then after that, then a lot of times they'll start doing the drilling, uh, project after that. So some of these projects, I mean, I've been in oil, gas and carbon capture and a bunch of different projects. A lot of times these are, you know, one year to five year kind of projects before sometimes a drill, you know, the, the drilling starts up. So it's generally ranges like that.
Are you aware of the, did this seismic testing in the eighties in Humboldt County?
Uh, we're aware. We actually have access to the data.
Oh, I just want.
Yeah. So this shoe would actually kind of fill in the gaps of what they missed in the eighties and then current processing technology.
Oh, it's changed a lot.
Sure.
Reprocess.
Technologies, I mean, I mean, used to.
They used to roll cable across the field.
Eighty paddles of cable just to put out a handful of, with one of these. Um, so yes, it was, and the quality of this sensor, like I said, you can, you can report stuff eleven, twelve miles away with this and whereas the quality was really low.
I got a question for you, cause we just had a gentleman here said a blast damage as well with a seismic.
Oh, we do not use.
The thumping thing is he sends his vibrations.
Okay.
And we're gonna have.
So number one, we don't use dynamite. A lot of times they used to use dynamite. So we don't use dynamite anymore. We use vibra sized buggies. Um, I don't know what the source was, that when you say thumping to me in the seismic industry, that's, uh, an accelerated weight drop. And what that does, that sends a lot of instantaneous force in a very fast, it's, it's a hammer hit, right? It's a really fast pulse. There's a very high, um, peak force, uh, particle velocity force and that's what causes damage. Um, so what we end up doing is we use, number one, we use small vibrators. Um, like I said, this vibra sized truck is about twenty-seven thousand pounds.
Basically I'm asking, we're not gonna have a bunch of people complaining about what else are problems.
Yeah. And the long story is, short is, is we have, we have an auditing, what we do with this company is we do, um, a third party company called, uh, it does peak particle velocity monitoring and they, they drive and walk along beside the vibe. And they're always putting down sensors around any structures, culverts, uh, tiles, anything, uh, um, gas lines. And so all this, these. And so all this, these hazards are pre-mapped and they're loaded into our seismic vibe act, you know, acquisition system. And we put buffers and boundaries around them, plus the secondary is we have that particle. So we know the velocities and the energy that gets sitting to the ground and we know what will cause damage. And there, they're basically to say, hey, we're getting close to that target. Either we need to offset it additionally more or just drop the shot point. So we're very cognizant. I do a lot of, I do a lot of uh engineering work. We're out shooting in little towns and cities all the time. I don't just do exploration work. So we're very cognizant of um, you know, activities in cities and, you know, gas lines, water mains, uh utilities. Culverts, all that kind of stuff.
So when you go buy a house, your coffee cup's not gonna vibrate on the table. That's all.
No, sir. Sorry, long explanation, but I wanted to make it so that you know, we technically know what we're doing and I do a lot of engineering work in towns and cities.
And we were just in the town of Litterdale, the shooting in Carroll County, so the county mayor of Litterdale.
Zach and um.
Zach Anderson. So.
I think we, I think, I think the problem was, was everybody gets on and Googles vibrator sized and the big trucks pop up and all of these, these stories pop up. Um, again, once, yeah, I'm definitely welcome talking to them because once they saw it, everybody's like, okay. This isn't that big of a deal that we, everybody was kind of making it out to be.
And then just for the scope, um, our current thought is to have seventeen miles of acquisition in this county. I'm just looking at your map, that would be the townships of Norway, Beaver Lake and possibly a little bit of Grove. Have an exact map. So seventeen miles, I mean, that, we're talking about less than a week of operation.
Yeah, about the time we, a day or two to land, get sorted, get started and then um probably about three or four days of shooting and then probably a day or two to. To move to the next area. So, pretty short time.
And it would be on county roads. So we're seeking a road use permit to be able to utilize the county road, the county easement. Um, if there are any private lands, we would of course work with those landowners to work out a easement to access their property, but I don't think we have. Properties in this county that would apply for private lands.
So for us and in all counties, obviously, uh. The roadways are just ours by easement, so I assume you're getting agreements. Which is from the actual property owners or. At least verbal agreements from the property owners. I understand it, it's non-destructive testing that you guys are looking at doing, but. Can give you a, a road use agreement temporarily, but property owners still need.
Yes, yeah, so we, we plan to, we're identifying them now and we'll be in contact with all inhabitants. Uh, for all of us. Uh, this uh program will be in eight different counties. There are a lot of people along the roadways. Um, so we have a robust uh. We're identifying them now, prepare an initial notice to go out. So our first step in this whole process is to incorporate the counties, understand the road use permit. Um, and then kind of start to share information.
So if you went out here on county K and you put them things down, the little orange things down along the shoulder, how far out from the road is this thing measured?
It's um, so really, I think of it as a two D slice. It's literally as I lay him down the road and we shoot down the road. There is a leaky energy that kind of comes in from the side, but that actually damages the data more than it helps. So. Now this area generally geology's pretty flat, so just think of it as a two D section or ride along road. It's not looking really on either side.
So you're not?
No.
A quarter of a mile east direction.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, not at all. Just the road.
Well, this is kind of curious. You mentioned exploration. And exploration, it sounds like the path of least resistance is to go this route with the right of way acquisition. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you find something in this. Sectional linear thing down the road, you're not gonna set up a, a pump station in the middle of the road or in the right.
Oh, yeah.
So this is gathering data to see if in a general given area, you don't know without doing it, but in a general given area. If you would be contacting landowners down the road for permission, whatever that is, to further. You know, test and potentially drill at some point.
That's absolutely right. Yeah, today we have no rights to actually drill wells and.
Like saying, I, I just wanted to use path of least resistance and Ben brings up a good point. All this. Exploration stuff that you guys are doing, it, it isn't looking to set up a, a pumping station in the middle of any county's roadways. It's gonna be in somebody's field, right?
Yeah, this, this gains no rights other than just a.
It's just bad, but. Alright.
Doesn't have an existing easement for those who have road use agreement. For them to temporarily do it, like I said.
Well, I'd say give us a week to hear from the public and visit with Ben about it.
Yep.
He'll probably check with the same.
I'd like to see a demonstration.
Yeah.
Have you seen their presentation that you mentioned? Have you got that to Ben?
Yes, I do.
If you get that to Ben, I mean, he would be the.
Okay, sure.
Is the larger presentation.
Cause you've got several hours to sit down and watch videos.
They're short, they're about fifteen seconds, there's only three over there.
And, and, and we replicated the Carroll counties. They created a new permit for their seismic acquisition, so.
So they'd be a good resource for Ben to visit with.
Okay, okay, good job, Ben. Thanks.
Hi.
Looks like you're gonna be in Rick and my territory, so.
Okay.
I'd like to see something, a demonstration or something, because I don't want a half a dozen calls. Somebody thumping the road and there were vibration and stuff, so.
Absolutely.
Cause it sounds like to me you're gonna slap these in the ground. I don't know how you're gonna put them in there, but.
There's a, it's in the video.
Drill small.
Yeah, it's like a.
Slap them in the ground, come along with a thumper and thump.
Yep, just roll, think of it as just rolling through. Lay them down and use the vibe machine to come through and then pick them up and we're done.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think we are willing to offer a demo. We were just trying to figure out how to do it efficiently with all the counties too. So I think uh we're gonna try and land a game working with you and then we'll, we'll absolutely do a demo. The demo will show how those go to the ground.
Yeah, we'll.
How the machine actually works and then we'll have, you know, the ability to answer any questions.
So if, if we gave you the permission to do this, what's your timeframe on? Are you thinking you're gonna do this before snow flies?
Uh, we're planning to do this in the months of November and December. But.
While the snow's flying.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically, um, we do a lot of this, like especially like when we do the three Ds and stuff, we've done them. All, I mean, all the way through winter. I mean, we work really every day of the year, seven days a week, twenty-four seven. So I'm pretty much wherever the clients have it. So yeah, we're used to working in uh, I'm gonna be in Washington state, probably. Sometime doing a small three D up there, so I'm sure I'm gonna be in, in deep lizard country, but at some point, but uh, yeah, we're, we're working in. In the winters as well. Perfect.
Thank you very much for your time.
No, I mean, uh, obviously everything's gonna start with uh the route map. I know like we spoke on the phone, we spent five million on an overlay I'm not interested in doing. By Tori testing next to the new roadway, but. Our gravel system is open for testing. Um, I've seen the video from Carroll County where you did the testing, like you could even see. The, the plate, when they, they set the plate down, vibrated really loud, moved on. You couldn't see a depression from where the plate was at on the gravel. So like I said, I did look at it as non-destructive testing that you guys were doing.
Probably ain't much worse than a loaded drain for you.
It's, it really, it isn't. And they're not gonna do it over a bridge or a culvert because it doesn't give them good results anyway, so.
Yeah, like one of our county tiles that's a hundred and five years old.
We're just working around those. We do a lot of work in, uh, like I said, in three Ds in Indiana, Illinois, so we're, we're very aware of the tile systems that are.
Yeah, that'd be one of our issues.
Yeah, we realize how old they are and they're made of clay, so it's.
Yeah.
It's an interesting, I come from Texas, I've never heard of those until I started working in Indiana, Illinois. I was amazed that they actually buried these for drainage. That was impressive, so.
A lot of part of this county was swamped or twenty years.
I didn't realize that, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why there's so many drainage districts up there, right? With the tiles running everywhere.
You don't have to dig too long and you'll hit them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we've seen, like I said, in Indiana, Illinois, I've seen where tiles are broken, you got the big depression where it's sucking the, the materials in and stuff. Yeah, and we do hazard surveys before we ever start, we do the before and after. So we have videos, timestamp, GPS, we have everything documented before and after. That includes the roads. So we can share those.
Failures on those type of systems and show up in your.
You bracket today and next year your replacement.
There's a lot of kind of what we do for.
Well, the nice thing about what you got with us is you have high resolution GPS, so you know exactly where that vibe is shaking. And I have PP uh, that P particle velocity testing, we document all of that, so all of that's on the record. So it's, and so pretty well covered by them. I'm sure. If we break anything.
Yeah, just leave us your own fault.
Yeah. As long as it's huge.
Yeah.
But sounds interesting.
So fun process. I've been doing it for thirty years now, so.
Well, I've heard about the Vincent deal about three or four times now and I'm gonna have to go. My nose is gonna drag me down there to Snoop to see.
Vincent, is that though Carroll County?
South of town or south of us down here, they're, they're already drilling some well down there.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm way up.
They've done two. So we've, we've drilled three wells in, around Vincent. Um, we're completing our third well right now. Uh, so the vehicle actually started to leave the site today.
Oh, okay.
So if you wanna look at it. It's, it's uh, all that equipment will be leaving.
How deep did you drill?
Uh, that will uh TV around nine thousand one hundred and ninety feet. Last footage we got. So that's the second deepest well drilled in Iowa. The first one was from the late seventies, uh from I think Texaco, you know, so they drilled this like seventeen thousand feet.
And you got a lot of hydrogen with that then?
Uh, well, uh, it is not commercially, it's not producing. So it's, it's a semi-science well, so we drilled into the formations that are capable of producing nitrogen. Uh, or theoretically capable of producing hydrogen. So we've got lots of data samples, uh core samples. Uh, so we'll be spending a lot of time analyzing that and convention side of the data.
Cause you've hit any water, we're kind of short of.
Yeah.
That should have water.
There's a lot of water, but the deeper you go, the saltier it gets, if you wanna um.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That's interesting.
Yep.
Moving on. Down the committee report, it's like. Alrighty then. Last week, uh Tuesday morning, we had a public safety board meeting. And then uh, a couple things to wrap up some business for building families. We had a Zoom meeting on Wednesday afternoon for approval of the annual report. This uh quick Zoom meeting for building families and I had my two official extra quick directives.
Uh, Tuesday morning, I had a public safety meeting along with Eric. That's what I had.
I had no meetings, but they had the mobile food pantry, which sounds like it was pretty uh well attended. They had uh. Ninety-seven hundred and two pounds of food. They had two hundred and twenty families.
Wednesday night dog chapter also, sorry.
They had twenty-six volunteers. Humboldt had a hundred and twenty families, three hundred and twenty-six members. Humboldt Homes had fifty-seven families and seventy members. Livermore had twenty-seven families, forty-seven members for a total of two oh six and four hundred and thirty-three. The only uh thing that I guess the discussion is, is they're getting more food. And the truck coming the following day is providing uh, they're needing some, some more help. So we're looking for uh volunteers to help unload that truck when it comes before the. I think it's around noon or between twelve and one, it stops at the fairgrounds there and Diane said that. You know, they only had usually two or three people and they comes down on the pallet, but there's so much food to move over on the tables. She could sure use some extra help, so we're trying to figure out how we can coordinate getting more help uh down to the fairgrounds. Free.
Free time.
Free time before the distribution starts, so we're working. And I shouldn't say we're, I haven't been very good getting down there. I wasn't there, I was in Minnesota, so. Anyway, that was the food pantry numbers. That's all I had.
On um Tuesday the tenth, we had a, a meeting at the board for kitty cat daycare, trying to figure out what we're going to be doing. Um, we also did inter, I also did interviews that day with uh Kristen, um. So I always want to say, well, I remember maintaining, but um, and we did, so we did interviews that day also, plus I actually worked there that day too. Um, so we, we do have an offer out to a director. Um, and we um have one full-time person that has accepted. And then we're looking at getting another full-time person and a couple of part-time people to kind of help with that. So Tuesday was pretty much all day kitty cat daycare. Um, between the board meeting and, and interviews and then I worked that afternoon and then I also worked three other days that week at the daycare. Hence the cold that I have now. Oh my gosh, I'll say, yeah, but that's pretty much my whole week last week was daycare.
Playing with the kids, huh?
Oh, yeah. I have found out I'm not, it's fun, don't get me wrong. I mean, I, you've really gotta give the people that work there everyday credit, but. I am too old to, to do that.
Something when you're chasing your own grandkids around and you can.
Yeah, it's, well, it's different. You've been, you know, yeah, definitely. I mean, I have five grandsons, so I'm used to running around after them. And I've had them all before, but you know, yeah, this is. And it sounds like I'll be doing it in a week. That's it. Oh, but Matt, if you wouldn't mind announcing on the radio that um they're having that big sale. It's for the um Studebaker family that have the, in Odison that their house was blown up. It's from eight until everything's gone. It looks like there's quite a bit. So if you could do, they're doing that, the, the um, and um, she's a jailer here.
Oh, yeah.
At the jail. Kathy, um. I'm not even gonna try to announce it. Oh, yeah.
Why share this?
Very good. So I don't, I'm not very good.
Well, I've seen that for different class names for.
Yeah.
As soon, I'm just going to Sootes County.
Okay. Yeah, but it's here, it says Stubeaker for the farm, so I don't know. I don't, I don't.
Casey's.
Uh, okay, see, I don't have all that old history. Yeah. Okay, that's it. That's all I got, but if you would do that, that'd be great, yeah. Thanks.
All right, Tuesday afternoon, I met with FEMA. I got a call from these ladies and said they was with FEMA. So I called Kyle and asked him if he'd come up and sit headway. We're getting an office to handle. There's the lady's card. They're in Washington DC. She asked a lot of questions about resources. In town, out of town, in the community, in the county. Uh, mostly right around the area. About the farm ground, uh, the rivers flooding, little bit of everything and anything. Still not quite sure of what they was looking for. Uh, they was interested in the. Uh they was interested in the hospital equipment loan closet that the VFW has. Um the use of the building up there, which uh Kyle and I are working on. So if something happens to the courthouse, it can be moved to the VFW. Uh in case of a disaster. And keep operations going, uh we gotta get an agreement and stuff there. Uh they asked a lot of different questions, uh what manufacturing places were around. We spent about an hour and fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe hour and a half. Uh discussing this stuff and talking back and forth, so. But they were real interested in stuff going on around the community and the flooding and. You know, the two rivers and.
And you said she's with, they, she was with FEMA?
Yep.
Were they kind of going door to door in town, cause I seen a couple gals walking around Dakota City.
It might have been. This was Kathleen Armstrong, it's a voluntary agency liaison, what her card says. Her phone number's Washington DC. And her email address is gov on the back of it, so. Anyway, it was quite an interesting meeting, and Kyle sat in on it, and we talked to different things about the school. Resources that we could do in in the community. Then on Wednesday night, we had the animal shelter meeting. We've got a lot of. Places that uh they're looking at, they've got a house now that they're gonna clean the cats out of. They had one at the uh sheriff's department, and they've got dogs scattered all over the state from that one. It was uh Buosee animals, dead carcasses and stuff around, so. And we're getting a lot of dumped animals, and we don't have room for dumped animals, we are full of. Clear full. And it seems like they're dumping cats and dogs. Uh other than that, I didn't get down to the mobile food pantry. I uh didn't figure I needed to go down there and put the weight on my knees, but I took the fall first of the week, so. That's all I had.
I forgot to mention, I had a call on the uh our sanitarian looking for the number. Uh I asked Trish, she's pretty sure it's on our website, but we still, we are now sharing with Bright County. Uh Sandy McGrath is the sanitarian uh over in Clarion. And I talked with Rick Rasmussen over there, and they do have a person hired now, so if someone calls looking to get a well checked. Or whatever, they have a person that they can do their own testing right there um with Sammy. So uh the number is five one five eight, five one eight eight seven eight is Sandy's number. Uh I sent a picture of this to the person that was inquiring. And I guess the other question or another phone call I had, or I was gonna bring up, was someone also requested. How much money have we spent on outside attorney fees? I said I don't have a clue, but I will try to get that number uh for them, so those were the two calls, three calls I had.
Um I think the other person working with Sandy is Jamie, don't know if it's mail or email. They just have a Jamie also living there, so.
I need to put that number in my phone before I forget it.
They do have two people working, so if they talk to a Jamie, it could be them.
Okay, Dan, you got anything for us? Unofficial. Okay, if nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All bear.
Hi.
Hi.
Calls nine twenty-five.